Call the meeting to order for Select Board for Wednesday, April 24th, 2019, for a special meeting. On the agenda is Sid Smithers regarding the Roost Building, then discussion of Town Office proposals with questions for bidders, and then hopefully adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we please make sure that after Sid Smithers, that we offer an opportunity for the former Town Office Committee to speak?
I'm okay with that.
I'd like to address, this is Bob on the phone. I'd like to address an email that was sent to the board about changing the process.
Okay.
Can you elaborate? Bob, did we lose you?
No, I'm still here.
Oh. What process do you want, what, can you please restate that? Because it didn't make any sense.
Okay, we all received a, an email that said that adding the interviews to the bidders was a changing of a process. I believe the words used were abandoning the process. And we all received an email that said we were ignoring the input of the town employees. I don't agree with either of those statements, and I'd like to address it.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I remember reading.
I'll clarify it.
Yeah, I, I, okay, yes.
All right. You want to do that first? Or do you want to hear from Sid first?
It doesn't matter to me.
Let's, let's address that piece first.
Okay, we'll do that first then.
I'm sorry, that was my item that you were doing first?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, well, first I just want to say that, uh...
Wait, 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 wait.
Hold on, hold on. We still have to approve the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
Rosemary.
I just have a question of protocol. On a special meeting, can you add something to the agenda?
Well, it falls in the purview of the, of the meeting itself, of what was initially on the... Huh?
You have to be very careful, because if you change, you're here for a specific reason tonight. If you change that reason...
The reason hasn't changed, Frank.
No.
Well, I'm just making a statement.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is in, this should be in direct relation to this.
Direct relation to the topic, yeah.
Right.
Okay. All right. Anybody else for changes? Your motion to accept it?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda with the additions. I'll second that.
All right, all in favor of accepting the agenda with the additions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Bob?
Aye.
Okay, all right, Bob's in favor. All right, motion carries. All right, so shall we get started? So, Mr. Walker, Bob? Who wants to go first on this?
I'm not going, he's, he's...
All right, Bob?
Sure, I'll, I'll start with that item. It, it, it should be fairly quick. One thing I wanted to point out is that was always part of the process, interview the bidders. In fact, on February 21st, we got a memo from, uh, uh, from, uh, from Mr. Walker. They, this was the last memo on the topic to the previous board. It was on February 21st. And the last line of that memo is, "I highly recommend the board interview each firm after reviewing the proposals to make a selection based on the interviews." So adding that step certainly wasn't abandoning the process. But also, even if we added that step, that's also not abandoning the process. It, it, it would have been an added step had this not existed, but this was always part of it. And certainly, we can see from the responses that we got from the, uh, from the five different companies, they fully expected that they would be interviewed by the board. It, it is in the RFP. The other thing I want to point out is that, uh, again, I, I don't think it's ever occurred where we ignored the input of our town employees, and that that was, uh, I'm not sure where that's coming from.
What could have been said, misinterpretation or feelings?
Yeah, yeah, you can respond.
Sir, in the most current email, I did in fact say I applaud and encourage interviews. I didn't even suggest that that was not a possibility or out of the possibility of what we need to do. In fact, I continue to encourage that. I was, that email was in response to employee reaction in consideration that when the decision was made, that there was, when you decided that we were going to have a special meeting and discuss interviews, there was no mention of looking at the grading sheets. And it was the impression from everyone that that step was going to be left out. And that is the reason for the email. If that's misinterpretation, misunderstanding, that's, that's one thing. But that was the impression employee reaction.
Okay, but it also alluded to, just as a, as a response, it alluded to this having occurred multiple times in the past. And I don't recall that ever occurring.
Okay.
We've sometimes not taken the recommendation. We've done something different, but we've never ignored input.
Point of view, that's okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any further discussion on that before we move on?
I have nothing, no.
Okay, Harry? Bob?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Let's, uh, hear from the former...
Sid.
Sid? I was gonna say, who do you want to go for next here? Sid? Sid?
Good afternoon, my name is Sid Smithers. I live on Tubbs Road in North Powell. And I am here tonight perhaps for a very abbreviated presentation. I had understood that tonight's meeting was to discuss the proposals that have been made with respect to the town off, new Town Office building. And because I feel strongly that the Roost should be among the possibilities considered by the Board of Selectmen in making the decision, I asked to get on the agenda so I could make a pitch for the Roost. I now understand that you are not going to be making choices tonight, that you are instead going to be talking about process, and that there will be another night when you will hear fully from all the proponents about all the proposals for all of the new office buildings. And I'm happy to come back at that time. I do want to be heard, I'm a judge.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sid. All right. Anything to add on that?
Should we clear up at this point? This is Bob on the phone. Should we clear up at this point that there hasn't been an RFP for the renovation at the Roost? So it's currently not on the table, that doesn't mean it can't be. But certainly that's a, that would be a change in the process that we're currently following. I think we want to set the right expectations, right?
Yeah. Go ahead, Harry.
So, Harry Percy, I, um, I had requested to see the actual verbiage of the ballot, on the ballots when we voted on the property for Bertell's Lodge, and also for voting for the $750,000 towards the Town Office. Because some people feel that it is a new building for new construction, and other people's interpretations is that it's a new site. And with that, I'd like to, so the board can see the verbiage so we can take and interpret it and, to find out. Because I personally feel the Roost is a viable option, dealing with the amount of money we're talking about. So I just, I want to look at all options, so...
Can I, uh, this is Bob, can I, can I respond a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, just a, just a quick comment. I, I agree too, and nothing I was saying was, was to say that I didn't think that it was a viable option. Um, I believe it is. And, um, uh, I just wanted to, to make sure that the board is clear with, with the citizens and with, with each other, that so far the RFP doesn't, we don't have any RFPs on it.
Correct.
I have any responses on it. If you'd like, I can read the article.
Sorry.
Bob?
Does anyone want to hear the ballot article? I've got the current one, I don't have the one from the previous one.
The, the, from the last, to vote for the $750,000?
Yes, that's correct.
No, I don't think we need to say it, that's not what we're here to do tonight.
Well, that's part of the, the process, that's what I'm saying.
We're here to ask, to come up with questions, that'll be it.
Okay, then that's fine, but that, without, we can't ask for an RFP without knowing what the verbiage is, I guess.
Yep, and we're sitting in the town hall, and I'm sure we can get copies of that.
Mike, you have something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and speaking of the attorney, and he and I drafted the article, that, number one, that the, the article asks the board to support up to $750,000 for the Supporting Historical Society to add the 1840's Schoolhouse to a modular constructed building. Two points, if the project isn't feasible, or the project isn't feasible for that cost, the, the board has reached a point where its support has expired in terms of, you've done your duty. So if reaches that point, your decision, if it reaches that point, then you would have done your duty. And he also assisted in drafting the RFP, which had to include that particular option. He indicated that we could put any number of options on there as well as that, but we had to put that one. When we were asked to have him draft that, it wanted it to be non-binding. And that's why he drafted that language. Now, I kept it to three. It was my decision to keep it to three with the board's support, they approved the RFP. So we kept it to three, including that one. So it's your decision if that's a responsible bid, and if you think that is a responsible bid, whether the project can be done for $750,000. If you do so, think that, fine. If you don't think so, we've, we've done our duty in terms of supporting Historical Society.
Yeah, Bob?
I have...
I can, I can send the, the verbiage to everybody for this one, but I don't have the previous one. I know, Harry, you had asked for both of them.
I, I, I have it, Bob. It says, "Shall the voters of the Town of Powell approve the continued effort by the Town Office Committee to work on construction of a new Town Office on land owned by the town located on Center Street for an amount not to exceed $911,000, $911,100." That was back in, I'm thinking it was 2017. So that one was before, that was the ballot article before the ballot article requesting up to $750,000, or not, an amount not to exceed $750,000 in support of the Historical Society's project. That was the one that just, yeah, that was linesynced.
And did that...
So those are the last two, those were the last two ballot articles that I have.
All right, hold on.
Yep, yes, that was defeated.
Okay, hold on, comments from the non-board? Please introduce yourself in which to be called upon.
Rosemary Pelletier, I just wanted a clarification that that, that issue actually was defeated, so it doesn't bind the board at all.
Correct, correct.
Please introduce yourself.
Johnny Dewar, former Selectwoman, when we put the ballot article about the $750, not to exceed $750,000 for the Historical Society, the intent of the ballot question was, do you want it to stay on the table or not? It wasn't, do we move forward with this, do you support this project? It is, does it stay amongst the other potential projects?
Right.
Just to be really clear about what that ballot article was intended to do.
Do you have something to say, or?
I'm just sitting here.
Okay.
But I'm going to say something anyway.
Let's hear it.
Do you want to introduce yourself and...
I'm Frank Lamb, a former Selectman and Chair of the fired Town Office Committee. We did an RFP on the Roost. We got three proposals back from the RFP. I believe Mike has them, and I think he gave them to you first. That was, that was where it ended, and, and the reasoning at that particular time, and I can't speak for the board, because I have no idea what, what the board was, was thinking at that point in life. But the committee looked at the proposals, and they looked at the three proposals that were there, and, and they came in, they were, they were reasonable proposals as long as John Chapman gave you the building and the property.
Gave it, like, didn't charge the town for it at all?
That's right, because, you know...
It's the price scale.
The price scale that you have, that's the renovation cost. It doesn't include buying it. So then the question was, well, okay, do we have to buy that? You know, we're gonna have to spend money to buy that when we've already spent money to buy the land down here in the center. So yes, there was, was an RFP. It was done, it was put out.
I have a question, Brian, may I ask?
Yeah, go ahead, Sid.
Um, Mr. Lamb, when the RFP went out in the, you said there were three, three responses to it?
No, I didn't say that, I said there were...
No, I'm asking, were there three responses to it? Or there was just the one response to it?
How many came back? There were, there were, yes, I think there were at least three responses that came back.
Three different versions of it to it.
Yep.
Three different versions, so were they all from linesync?
No, 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 these are three different companies.
What we got tonight, was this only from linesync? So does any...
Linesync was the one, because we agreed that, we accepted linesyncs.
Okay, but there were, but there were two other...
Yes, there had been.
Okay, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
So, the three proposals that you have came from linesync. And that, you've got to remember that that includes the building and the shop out back, John's...
Yeah, work.
Chapman Workshop, that's out back. That was all included in that.
And that was being purchased? Those buildings being purchased? Or being incorporated into the design, those two buildings?
No, no, that was part of the, that's what, if you had owned it, that's what you would have owned.
Okay, thank you.
So that's what we did. And we decided that when you looked at the, when you looked at the cost, and then you had to buy the property on top of that, that it was more than what we could do down here.
I just, I just wanted to clarify something.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, people got their hands up.
Yeah, that's where I was gonna...
So these three prices, Mr. Lamb, those did not include the purchase price of the property?
Okay, Rose, then, said to go.
I was just gonna ask, do we know what the purchase price was back then? And do we know what the purchase price is now? Is there a difference between those two?
Yeah, keep fluctuating.
Mr. Chairman, price is $385,000.
No.
Absolutely, Michael, do you see that price?
That was from then?
No, no, I've got the quote, the last one he handed me on a piece of paper.
Same price as it was back then?
That's his, that's his last.
$380,000.
When, when was that, when did he give you that quote?
Month or two ago, when we asked him. The board asked me to get a quote from him, I got a quote from him.
Where are you pointing to?
And I was, I saw it laying here.
Oh, was it in, in my stuff?
Absolutely, that was the quote. I went down to his shop and he handed it to me.
Sid, you wanted to say something?
Justice, Sid Smithers, Tubbs Road, North Powell. There is no doubt that when the Town Office Building Committee considered the Roost several years ago, they did ask linesync for an estimate of the cost to repair it. And the estimate of cost to repair it in three different modes, which are described in linesync's report, did not include the purchase price. Obviously, not obviously, but I will tell you, I don't think, from my conversations with John Chapman, which were very brief, I don't think he intends to donate the building to the town. But I think the opportunity presented by the Roost should be looked at afresh. And it should be included with the other options you're considering, including an idea of what it's going to cost, because my understanding from Mr. Chapman is that it isn't $385 as a purchase price now, but I'm not going to represent what it is. And I think you ought to look at all four proposals afresh. And it's worth the time and the effort to see if, as I believe, the Roost is going to offer you the most cost-effective means of getting new office space that will be suitable for the town for years to come. That's all I'm saying. I'm not suggesting that you discard anything else, just include the Roost in your considerations. Linesync had a dog in the hunt. It was their proposal that was going to be on the ballot to build a new Town Office.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smithers.
Thank you.
But, um, Bob Jarvis on the phone, if I could just chime in?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Uh, the, um, I would pay close attention to what was on the ballot article for, for, for this time around. I know what we're saying is, we put out the RFP, we had three options on the table, this was one of the ones that was considered. I agree with all of that. But I have to put myself in the, in, in the standpoint of a voter who's voting for or against that ballot article, and what that means to a voter. So it's, uh, it's not just fulfilling the idea of it. If I'm voting yes on this, then I'm voting for a max of $750, and I'm voting to support the Town Historical Society's idea. I'm, I'm not voting, I'm not voting that, you know, to put that on there with no intention of moving forward with it. And that's how it'll be perceived. So I, I think we need to be careful how we proceed. Would also point out that back in December, as we were talking about this in some of our board meetings, at that point, we were still thinking that we might have a ballot article that said, choose one of the following, Proposal A, Proposal B, Proposal C, or None. And that's, uh, that's what we were still talking about. So I don't think it's really been all that clear as to what is actually going to be in that ballot article and, and what the costs are to even get to that ballot article.
What ballot article are you talking about, Bob?
The one in November that, that we're proposing that the, the voters will be voting on. What we're being asked to do now is to pick one of these options and enter into contract for designing, for design. And, and if you read through the proposals, the design phase is anywhere from, uh, it could be as high as $70,000 just to get to the ballot article.
Bob, when did that conversation happen? Because I'm, don't recall having any conversation with this board about putting any type of ballot on the Nov-, any type of article on a November ballot.
Hold on, I think Jenny's got clarification.
This was the ballot, this was the November, this past November ballot. Bob and I were both on the board at that time. That was the board of Nelson and Jason and...
The previous boards.
The previous board.
Oh, I was been confused too.
So November of 2018.
Put that, put that ballot article on. I voted to put that ballot article on specifically because it wasn't saying what we were voting for. It was saying, allow it to stay on the table. I don't think we can put into the voters' minds how they have perceived a written ballot article. I certainly read it the way it was meant to be read. And I know several people who signed, and I'm not fighting against it, I just want it to be the, specific the way it was. When people signed the petition to get that ballot on, lots of people signed the petition not wanting that, but they wanted to support them wanting to put it forward. So you can't say that when a ballot article was clearly written, if someone misread it and misinterpreted it, you can't decide that all the voters misread it and misinterpreted it. That's not fair, the voters are smarter than that.
That's the only one they have.
It's just clear that, that's not what I'm saying. I was referring, I, I, part of what I was saying was referring to December Select, December Select Board meetings, where we were still floating the idea of next November, or this coming November's ballot article, being a choice between three, three or none. Or that was one of the ideas. So, and clearly by December, we hadn't decided what our next ballot article was going to look like. So I'm a little surprised that we're, we're now talking about entering into a contract and, and, and paying a lot of money that's not even on the budget for design services.
Bob, you're talking about something a previous board did, where they didn't make any decisions, where we as a new board aren't obligated to do what that board was discussing to do. I mean, we can discuss something going forward, but we're not bound to that at all.
No, we're not bound to it, and that, that's true.
It's not saying that we can't talk about it, but you're talking, you, the way you're, you're presenting the information is you're presenting it as if this board is, must do that, and we have no knowledge of any of this previous board discussions of ballot articles.
Okay, um...
So, so we really need to focus on the here and the now in going forward, and not what was discussed in the past that wasn't acted on.
Totally, we're not getting anywhere.
That, right, right. I mean, we're, we're just chasing our tails in a circle.
Yeah, we need to, we need to move forward. Okay, so right now...
Not at all what I said.
Sorry, Bob?
Not, I said, not at all what I said, but let's move forward.
All right, so, the former Town Office, or the committee, they gave their input? So... Yes, Steve?
I know I shouldn't.
Please introduce yourself.
Former Select Board Member, Town Office Committee Member. If folks need to go back to the original drawing years ago when the land was purchased, it was a piece of land purchased for the use of the Town Office.
We could build it.
It was purchased at a price that was reasonable for the Town Office from the owner to the town for a specific reason, because he actually wanted the town to own it. So we got maybe a better buy than the average person would have for that purpose. That was a start. Now, in the process, getting prices, and we had many of them from different companies, they ranged up to $4.5 million to restore the building that was there, which obviously couldn't be done. We, we did through a lot of different design factors and price factors, which scared everybody in town right to death. And those figures would do that. We come up with a group of people finally to look at different ideas for the land, what could be proposed for down there. We had two companies come in very close on our thoughts, the Town Office Committee, on what our view of it was, their view was. Linesync came in with the active mindset that we were working with. We had them do these things. Now, the prices obviously got high on this. We built, designed a building that was adequate for the time, adequate for tomorrow, that would also sit into the area. Now, to put myself out there to get beat up nice and severely, we also did it with the pride of the town. So you built something that showed your town to the people that came into it, showed your workers a place of quality to work in, and had the atmosphere around it in the center of your town. That is a park now. It's called a park, it's Powell Center's Park. It also could be a community park with your Town Office in assorted places for people to visit, sit, whatever. The location's proper. What messed the whole thing up and got things going, again, was the price. And everybody, if, when you get close to a million dollars, everybody foiled. They all got panicked at the school when we talked about it. You could have said it was going to have gold shingles on it, nobody cared, a million dollars. So, entered the fact, the building's too much, now you have to look at other buildings. People throw different things out trying to save money, which is great. So there's several different buildings thrown out to us. As we looked at these buildings and did a cost analysis on them, we found out we're running into the same problem, price-wise. To convert a building into what we need versus what we could build for, we're coming very close to the same figures. So my personal feeling and logical figure, but we'll call it my personal, if you're within a certain dollar amount on a building that you can build that is fit for the future, way down the road, in the right location, in the right part of your town, for just a couple dollars more to suit your town for the future versus one that may be a little less but would work, wouldn't you be better with this little bit larger amount, doing it right once? We have spent a small fortune on people looking, digging, relooking, going back and looking again, to say nothing about interest rates, lumber cost, and just wages in general to build this again. I don't know what the prices would be now. We, as a committee, took this building and tore it apart, nights in here ourselves, trying to figure where we could cut some corners on it. And we figured comfortably, we could put this in the seventy, eight hundred, thousand dollar range. I don't believe rebuilding any of these buildings is gonna get you in, in an awful lot less money. And, as I've said before, when you build something, you build it to suit. When you restore something, you do it the best you can get at it. This is new, this would be the proper thing for the town for the future, for your energy efficiency, for your standing materials that go into it today, your wiring, et cetera. To say nothing about, there's your community center, folks. The old school, I think the school's a great idea to save. I don't believe it's worth putting it into a town office, and for a couple reasons. What do you have to do to that building? All of you know what that land looks like. How are you positioning the building down there? It has windows on one side of it and in the front. Are you pointing the windows this way and this way for the sun and the view of Route Seven? Are you losing the valley? Are you spinning it around so nobody gets sunlight? Or are you blowing windows into it? Whatever you're doing to the building, you're gonna totally change it. And when you get done making it so it's the way you need it, it's not your school anymore. So I, this restoring, if you're restoring is one thing, but if you're, as a carpenter, it'd be restomodding it instead of restoring it like it was, it's not that same thing anymore. So, my feeling on the school, and I brought a paper over here last week. I think if the people can, the historical societies can gather up money, um, I think the school down at the end of, the community center, setting down there as a historical building or senior center or a combination of the above, put down at the end of the lot down there, would be absolutely great. You could keep it in its same form, put it down there for use there in the park with the town office and everything else. My opinion.
Mr. Kope, can I ask a question? In two.
I'm, knock out the cobwebs.
In two thousand and five, um, I have, um, copies of the minutes from two thousand and five where there was the proposal to purchase the land for sixty thousand dollars.
Five twenty-three Center Street.
And the motion passed. There's a note that says it was discussed that, um, any town, town facility would be put on the ballot, um, for the town to vote, the motion carried. Did that ever go on a ballot after two thousand and five? Or did it take until two thousand and whatever, two thousand and sixteen?
And I, there was, boy, there was an awful lot going on. Um, the building that was there was an old end. It was a great old building at one time. Some people thought it was still a great old building. And it probably could've been with the right, the right amount of money thrown at it. That went into the point of a whole bunch of, it had to be restored. And that tied up a lot of time. Uh, I don't know how long, but I'm gonna say years. And somebody probably could've come up with a better timeline, but there was years involved on how this building could be restored to be our town office. The money, one of those quotes was four and a half million dollars. Now, that did include sidewalks and streetlights, trust me, but you still were rebuilding a building and putting a fortune into it. It went as far as people even got a contractor up here to move the building to Seattle, across the road to save it. Unfortunately, I hadn't quote, talked to the lady that owns the land across the road, so that went nowhere. But that's all right too. But there was a lot of time struggling on what to do with the building. And, boards, you folks have a, not only position, but an obligation before you, to the town. You make decisions for the town. You'll get all sorts of people hollering at you, whether it's right or wrong anyways, but the idea is to make the decisions. We've had this in the past problems. We had problems making our decisions, what to do with the building. And we went through a lot of legal battles. And luckily, we found a couple loopholes where we actually legally could take the building down and end that one particular argument that had been going on for years and a lot of money spent. So, entered the fact, now we have a clear lot, we're ready to go with something. We get some estimates, they're high, obviously, and people throw some other ideas at us. You have to look at it because the public's asked us to, so we did. And we came back to the original. And now we're still looking again. And it's almost like we're starting all over again. And personally, we just can't keep starting over. How much money's been put into this building that these people should've been out of here years ago from working in, uh, instead of the money that's been put in here? I've done some rough calculating in my head, and I think with what's put away right now and what's been put in this building, we could be making the people very happy if we had all that money to put toward that new building. I think it would be very, very light money, money.
So in two thousand and fourteen, some minutes indicate that there were two studies done, one on building a new building and one on retrofitting the current building. Was that in reference to the, to the lodge building?
Markel's Lodge.
Markel's Lodge, okay. It just indicates here that it was, that, that the conclusion was that it was cheaper to build the new building than retrofit, so that's what you were just talking about. So that was in two thousand and fourteen?
That dragged on for a long, long.
Okay. Thanks for that historical reference.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a long time.
Well, it just, it costs us a lot of money. And you, you know, I don't wanna be rude and say that people don't know, but they, an average person doesn't understand what's involved in building a state facility, something for the public, what the involvement is. They know what a million dollars is, they know what seven, eight hundred thousand is. And they say, well, I can build a house for a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. Why is this so crazy? We looked at other town offices. The Town of Wells built one, uh, Castleton just built one, Weston Vermont built one, uh, Sandgate built one. Between the board members around there and myself, we've looked at those buildings. And they all ranged, back then, in the seventy, eight hundred thousand dollar area, with the exception of Wells, I think they were five hundred. Uh, the Roost had donated, the land was donated, oh, I can't remember, there was a whole bunch of stuff that people come in and donated and had town to build that. It's a very small building, but they still got away with around four to five hundred thousand dollars. But there was a ton of donations in there, excavating and everything. So, you know, the prices, we weren't, none of us are carpenters in this, but we were working with people that had done this. And not everybody went out there and didn't do their homework. They had done it too, and they come in these figures. So what we tried to do was get the biggest bang out of our dollar, put something there that you could not only be proud of, proud with, but would work efficiently for us and fit the future. So, in the future, if you had a, a dog warden that needed office, a health officer that needed office, I mean, this could happen someday. We could get out of this rut and actually go forward with needing more room. You got a whole basement, walkout, all handicap accessible either way, up or down. The way the land sets, you could do this very simple. And it's there. In the meantime, it's a mechanical room and storage. So, we did a lot of work in this, and Line Sync was a great company to work with. Uh, we've traveled up there many times and visited with them during the day for absolutely zero cost to the town, not even gas mileage. And that wasn't a problem. We did it because we were interested in this. Again, why we were let go, we're not exactly sure. The vote didn't pass on the building, but, you know, we still don't have a building either. So, I don't know, we get confused easily, we're not, you know. But anyway, that's it.
Thank you so much for the.
Did you wanna say something, Mr. Winchester?
No. Been watching this thing for twenty years, maybe longer. Twenty-six of them, fly by and by.
We found the minutes, we just.
Well.
I agree.
The bottom line is, we're still in this building. Crowded in here, as anybody on television can see.
It's nice and cozy, Jim.
It is cozy, yes, it is. It is cozy. But, uh, this, this, there's a few white elephants in this story. Markel's Lodge was long and drawn out. We had that shirts next door, if we owned. Anybody ever ask what we're gonna do with it someday? Has anybody ever asked, how are we gonna please the voters? Now, we all know the voters, you hear voter stories, whatever. So far, we haven't pleased the voters. Why haven't we pleased the voters?
Because it's scared.
They're scared, we're older, but the heydays of Ponder have gone by. Uh, an older generation, taxes, you know about taxes. If we can find a way to please the voters, in some way, we're gonna fly by, this, this would've passed along down the road. But, for some reason, fly any women, I don't know what it is, but the vote, the voters are scared. And I, I, I'm gonna throw a fly any woman right now. They're even more scared now because of the landfill coverage of seven hundred and fifty thousand. So, uh, if you're sitting there tonight, watching, and you're trying to make a decision, and everybody in this damn board is good, their hearts were good, they were tired, but I still never heard anybody say, how are we gonna please the voters? We haven't done it yet, and we're still sitting in this room again. That's all I've got to say. How are we, how are we gonna get these people from being unscared to move on? We're, we're steelmen, we're stuck for twenty-four years. Find the magic, may the, make, find the magic wand. You guys might do it. I, I really think that there's people here in this town that are happy with this board, that you'll make a decision to move on. You'll at least hear everybody, and you're listening tonight. And that's a good start. Amen.
Thank you.
Steve?
I'm gonna give you a part of where that magic wand is. Did you notice Shasberry just built a new town garage?
Did you notice Cole Hall just got renovated? Forty-five years old, it's for Jack Watson, and we renovated that.
No, but I'm saying.
No, but Cole Hall's still up there.
No, what I'm saying, they built a new town garage. It's over a million dollars.
Right.
At, no tax increase. Now, the way they did it, and I remember hearing the meeting, so if I'm a little off on this, I apologize, but if I'm not mistaken, they started putting a certain amount of money away for this building, pretty good chunks. So, when the time come, they put it up to vote, and it wouldn't be at any tax increase, which was a cool way to go. When I joined the board, we did not have a town office fund. We had a general fund, but not a town office fund directly for the building. That started back ten years ago, probably, somewhere in there. So, you know, we should've started that sooner, obviously. But, it did get started, and I think there's a pretty good chunk in there now.
I think a little under three hundred thousand.
Yeah, right, right around there.
Yeah. It's a special fund earmarked for the building.
What that amounts to into an increase on taxes. And believe it or not, over that span of time, it's not that scary to voters, but they still see the big number. And that's the hard part. But the problem, again, Jim's right there about this bouncing around. But we bounced around for years on what to do with the building that had been cut up, had weak sections in it, and been on fire. We bounced around for years figuring out what to do with it, 'cause nobody made a decision. A decision has to be made now, and that, that, this could go on for years again, if no decisions are made. So, with fresh blood and hopefully a decision, people can make the move, can make the right move, but they won't understand it totally. They need to be led into the direction on people that are knowledgeable, that's best for the town. And when you're playing within fifty or a hundred thousand dollars on an eight hundred thousand dollar project, that's close enough, so you pick the best one, in my eyes. A hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. If it's split over twenty years, it's not a lot of money anymore. So, do you cut off your foot to save that money, or do you do it right and put it in there? I'd, I'd like to see that what you built would be here after we're gone, Ponder should be here, in the pride of the town and have something that, the money that was put in this building, like I said, as far as I'm concerned, was pretty much wasted. So, had to be done.
Yep.
But, if it had been, no building built ten years ago, you probably got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that would've gone into a fund down there.
Well, I appreciate your input, thank you, Mr. Kope. Perry?
Uh, the reason why the Roost proposal was back up is because a lot of people, I know, contacted me personally at the house and, uh, and, and passing, and asked if we were stuck on building something new or if we were gonna look at other sites, because that was one that was heavily looked at in the past, and they didn't know, I guess they were looking for clarification on it. And that's why I asked for the clarification and the verbiage, because I didn't know what the town actually truly voted on. And, because if, that way, we, as a board, we know a direction of movement, because we don't wanna take and sit here and spin our wheels. We're, our goal is to hopefully move on and better things without raising the burden on the taxpayers, so.
But you know, again, you know, the average person in town doesn't know who works in what situations here.
Right.
And the Roost is built for building. I mean, the design is great, going through the building, I'm impressed with the building, but it doesn't fit our need the way it is currently. And unfortunately, that means renovation goes in. Now, if that fit our needs, we wouldn't be having this conversation, that deal would've been signed. But, it doesn't meet it, so you have to change it. And you can only change just so much. You've opened that bag of worms up, and you have to meet all the requirements. That's the big bag you open up. Now you're gonna spend the money and do it. So, then you come up with the figures that are close to where we were.
Well, I'm just letting you know why that's back up.
The average person doesn't know that.
Okay.
And it's very understandable.
And while we move.
Not even how you get it to everybody, 'cause with things as tight as they are, and this being a community that's living off the taxpayers, it's, it hits home real hard.
But our goal is to educate the public in every step as we're moving forward. Therefore, when it does come to a vote, I mean, hopefully we've answered.
We want informed decisions.
Most people's questions, I mean, that's our goal. We're not trying to hide anything, that's why we open it up for conversation, we're glad everybody comes.
Yep, this is what we wanted. Marlena?
I'll play devil's advocate for a minute. Just because I'm trying to understand everything. So it's my understanding that the Roost was never put up for a vote to the public, was it, or was it not? Okay. But my, okay, so, so the public never voted on the Roost?
No.
But I guess my bigger concern is, how do you determine which community property owner gets enriched by purchasing their vacant property for the purpose of supporting a town hall? I can think of four properties off the top of my head that are vacant. Why only the Roost? I'm not saying look at everything, but I'm just saying, like, regardless of which way you shuffle the deck, a property owner is going to be enriched by this decision. The town owns property to build a building on. Is it fair to purchase a property owned by another individual and enrich them? That's just, that's where, what I'm thinking is.
Well, I think that's like what.
What determines, what determines the fairness?
Well, that's what they're talking about. The cost of renovating the Roost did not include the purchase price of it. You include the purchase price of the building, and now suddenly you're in the same ballpark as building this nicer, or something similar, on property we already own.
Right.
And you've also, if you purchased another building, you've taken that off the tax trail for you.
Yeah. You also lose the tax money.
That was all gonna be put into the process.
Well, it would be.
Right.
You know, you're not going to. You know, you're not gonna say, okay, we're gonna lose this much in twenty years.
No.
Because you don't think that way, but the bottom line is, yes, you are.
No, that was the first question I asked, was how much of the taxes were on it?
That goes away.
Seven thousand. Yes.
How much coin's the end is about?
Six point nine weeks. Yep.
How much is it?
Six point nine.
Six point nine.
Yep.
And the other thing you have to remember is the fact that. And the other thing you have to remember is the fact that when this was all done. The roost was not for sale.
Not at the time, no.
When we bought that land for the building.
Two thousand and five.
The roost was not for sale.
Yep.
The roost became for sale after that fact. And you're gonna drive yourself nuts, people, because you're gonna keep waiting and waiting and waiting, and other things are gonna come on the market. And something else is gonna come on the market over here, and, and what are we gonna do about this over here? You know, enough already. Can't keep spending money looking at buildings.
That's true.
It's your decision, that's why you're sitting where you're sitting.
Well, we're trying to get all the information we can, so we can hopefully make a decision and
Right.
make enough voters happy to where they'll approve whatever the decision is made. 'Cause that's, that, that's the thing, ultimately, it's gonna be the voters' decision, and as we know, the voters are more than happy to turn down whether it's a good idea or not.
Well, you know, forget that, because that was turned down because you had, you had people on this, on this board who were campaigning against it. So let's take a look, let's not say, oh, they turned this down because it was a million dollars. It wasn't a million dollars when this went up for a vote. But you didn't have five people sitting around this table advocating to do this. Yeah, you didn't, it didn't happen, folks, you didn't have majority sitting around the table saying, this is the best plan, let's make it happen. So remember that, things were different just a few years ago.
Well, we are a new board, but ultimately, we are beholden to the voters.
Well, the voters, I, if you've given a, a good plan. You know what, the voters will vote for it, that's stupid.
No, that's why we want, we wanna be able to provide information to the voters, so part of that is we have to get the information, digest it, make it available to the voters.
And then you have to say, we're behind it.
Yeah.
I agree.
So. All right, so, anybody else wanna say anything? Bob?
Oh, yes, again, can I chime in here?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Uh, one thing to keep in mind is that, um, uh, the previous board, now, I wasn't involved in the process of the previous, uh, uh, failed ballot article. I've only been on the board for a year, and I guess that was a few years ago. Um, but one of the things that we heard from the previous board was that one of the reasons that it failed was that we, that the board really failed to, uh, uh, engage the public in the selection process. And I think that's part of, part of why we're, we're being, uh, why we're getting recommendations from previous board members, uh, to, to engage the public in the selection process. So I, um, just something to be, something to be aware of is, is going forward. I don't, I think if we go forward and select one, put it in front of the voters, I don't wanna, I don't wanna risk the failure. So I wanna do whatever's going to, whatever is going to give us the highest chance of a successful ballot article in November. So, um, I, I think, uh, I think we need to keep that in mind.
No, I, I can agree with that, I also don't wanna kick the can down the road for another twenty years.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely, go, that's a, it's a balancing act.
Yeah.
And I think, I think we've already had discussions about really making sure that we put in a robust community education effort when it starts to get narrowed down so that the community is one hundred percent in, you know, informed, that you inform, you know, over several different avenues. And that you have ample, um, ample feedback sessions, so that, you know, there can be tons of Q and As, so that the, the concerns and questions can be answered.
Yeah, this process is gonna be extremely open.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
'Cause we want all the input, so Fred wanted to say something.
Yeah, I just, like, like Bob said, I'm, I'm just, I don't wanna see another thing fail. Um, you know, you put one thing forward, that's the option, it's either up or down, then you start over again. And it's, it just adds at least another, maybe close to a year onto the discussion. Um, it might, might be a good idea to present two ideas and say, you're, you're, you're gonna vote for one. And one of them's gonna fly. We need a new town office, 'cause it's not a question of whether we need to end, and the people in this town hall agree, especially the ones that have been coming to these meetings here in this office.
Yeah, anybody that spent any time in here agrees that we need one.
Campaigning, though, people do understand we need a town office. I think, you know, presenting with a couple of ideas that are close in price, close in value, select one, you're gonna buy one.
Yep.
You can decide which one, and I hate to hear myself even saying that, but this is the way, the way it's gonna happen in this town. 'Cause otherwise, I think, different boards, you know, this board or the next board is gonna keep presenting the one idea, and it's gonna get voted down.
Well, I, I think I would imagine before.
We have another comment.
Um, I just like, would love to go on record saying, I agree with you, Fred.
Holy cow, it just froze over.
I just sound like, you know.
Sorry. Sid?
Uh, Sid Smithers, Cubs Road, North Carolina. Mister Chairman, I hesitate in a way to do this, but in thinking about your responsibilities and making this choice, and whittling through the choices that you have. And knowing the effort that Frank and others put into the building committee. I wonder if you don't wanna appoint a committee of three people, maybe three of your members, but not have it done in a committee of the whole of the Board of Selectmen, meeting after meeting, but rather delegate it out to somebody else. That's up to you, but it may be a more direct route to a definitive choice, have somebody working on it more full-time than you can.
Mike?
Mister Chairman, um, back some months ago. Uh, I got to a point where I was coming out of my chair, let me do my job. And Nelson said, okay, do your job, so I went out and I wrote an RFP, which is my job. And I got bids, I engaged staff, the people that are gonna use the building, used qualitative analysis, did matrix. And carefully evaluated the different companies that came in, carefully evaluated the roost. Love Fred to death, Jenny as well, it is patently wrong. It's a representative government, we're a republic, we're here to make decisions. If we could take all these things and lay them out in front of the public, you're gonna get all manner of things. I walked around a bunch of businesses in town, they wanted two things, stop fighting and make a decision. You have the options in front of you, every single document that I dug up, every single document that I dug up points to Town Hall, right over there. There's a tree out there that was dedicated in something nineteen thirty-three, it'd be a town center. Several documents that I turned over that point to having a town, town plan points to having a town hall over there. I don't know how, I, I don't know what else I have to say, I've, I've done this. Public administration rules some, don't buy something 'cause it's cheap and available, it's a, it's folly, you don't do it. Everybody know the difference between renovation and modification? In the, in the building codes?
Don't we have time?
No. One costs a heck of a lot more money.
I'm gonna watch you.
One kept a hepple, heck of a lot more money, right? You have to have a vault, you have, you have to have an air control, you have to have a certain amount of storage, it has to be state guidelines. We looked into this, I'm, I've, I've given as much advice as I could possibly give, and we keep on.
And as a board, we greatly appreciate your advice.
And, and.
For us, it's information gathering for ourselves, and also to make available to the public. To make everybody aware, 'cause there's, I feel a lot of misinformation out there as far as what's needed, what we're doing, and a lot of people don't understand. So it, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with taking a couple of weeks and providing information to the public and making them aware of what we're doing. Nobody, nobody is disqualifying what you've done for work, Mike, and I greatly appreciate all the work the, the previous commission put into all their efforts in providing information, and they provided a nice packet with their, what they looked at for the roost. But, you know, anyway.
I know, it seems extremely frustrating, but we are all new, and I, like you said, we just want all of the information, so, I mean, we're doing this for the people, so we have to be educated about it and see every avenue.
To Bob and Fred's point, we wanna make, we wanna present something that we're really confident is gonna pass the voters. 'Cause ultimately, that's what it comes down to, we, we could spend the next year designing something, and the voters could pass it down, or turn it down. So we wanna make sure that we take everybody's, listen to everybody, get everybody's opinions, give feedback, put the information out there, that way, when it goes to the voters, they know what's going before them. And unless you're living under a rock, you should know what we're, what we're putting before you. At least that's where I wanna be when we get something to the ballot. And obviously, we all support it. Marlena?
Um, I completely agree. I feel that it doesn't mean that we can't move forward with what we're supposed to be doing tonight, which is narrowing down one of the proposed designs, picking a, a design concept. That's just one piece. Not saying that we take the roost out of, that's totally separate set of facts and numbers and, and all that. Do what we came here tonight to do. Step one, get that information, and then plan for the next step.
I agree with that.
Good.
Bob?
Uh, yeah, so I, I believe one of the things we were gonna talk about tonight was how are we gonna go about doing the interviews with bidders, correct?
Correct.
And then, uh, and, and I just wanna make the point about the representational government, that's absolutely a true statement, but, um, uh, it is no formula that you can plug into a spreadsheet or anything else that's gonna spit out the right answer. Reasonable people and the board members will disagree as to what the right cost and trade-off values are. We were voted to exercise our judgment, not, not to
Thank you, Sid.
Not to give our judgment up to, uh, to some formula or some process. So that, you know, that, some of us might think that getting a little bit more of a building is worth the cost, where some of us might think saving the taxpayers' money is, is, uh, is better than, is a better choice. And reasonable people can disagree on that.
Well, as far as the spreadsheet and the information that's been provided to us, that's all just, it, it's all part of the puzzle.
Right.
And information we're taking in, it's not the sole end-all, be-all, like that, this is it, ignore everything else. It's, we're gonna, I hope, we're gonna discuss, we're gonna examine many aspects of this. We're gonna burn the midnight oil.
That's more, more information for us to get.
Right, that's the input from the employees, which we do have to take into consideration, which has nothing to do with the questions, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you, Rosemary, thanks, Fred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But anyway, so, can we move on to the discussion of what we're gonna, the current proposals that we have?
The questions that we're going to ask.
The questions we're gonna ask them. So has everybody had a chance to look through all the proposals and try to mail down some questions that they would like to ask? Anybody wanna go first?
I believe I sent everybody about fifteen or sixteen suggestions, if you, I don't know if you still have them or not. Hopefully.
I'm fine with the questions that you came up with, Michael, I don't have them printed out here in front of me.
Yeah, I don't have neither.
But I'm perfectly fine with those questions. My only concern is, what, what timeframe did we say that we would give each of the, um, submitters? Did we say thirty minutes?
We haven't said anything.
Okay.
We, we were discussing different numbers, but we didn't settle on one.
I just, because Michael came up with, with some good questions. But even if you say a minute or two per question, you're looking at almost thirty minutes, so is that gonna be long enough? Is that gonna be too short?
I don't know, I feel like this, it's a great idea, we should be asking questions, we have all of the information, like, it's, we it just seems like we're just going around and around and around.
But we should do our, we should do our due diligence and, and talk with each submitter, um, that's just proper.
They should come in and
Well, rather than asking, you know, twenty, thirty questions, should we try to pare it down?
Yeah.
Let them, let them do the talking, see what they have to say.
Yep.
Maybe give them a time limit, like, you have fifteen, twenty minutes, whatever, and sell us.
Well, and that's what, yeah, that's what I, I think we need to, we need to do, is we need to know what information we're looking from them ahead of time that we didn't get from the written proposals. Because written proposals can be great.
Well.
They can sound great, they can read great, it doesn't mean that.
Well, I think this, for me, this whole process of bringing them in and have them make a pitch, it's gonna be televised, they're selling the voters as well.
Does that make sense? Because we're picking it, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, I mean, they've given us a written, written proposal.
We had the same thing that we did this, we did exactly what you're doing as a committee, I don't know, three, four years ago, okay?
Thank you, Michael.
And we looked over their proposals, and I think we had them come in, or we gave them the opportunity to come in. Some of them may not come in, but we gave them the opportunity to come in. And we talked to them about, you know, what, what are you gonna talk to them about? They don't know what you want, you know what you want? Does this committee know, board know, what you want in a building? We, we have, well, we, that's, we spent weeks and hours putting together that right there. This guy, with all the offices and what was gonna be in this building. Okay, there it is. Have you seen, ever seen that?
Oh, that's the first time I've seen it.
Yes.
I remember seeing it at the, uh, public meeting.
This is room for gun design, by talking to the people that were in here, in what space they felt they needed.
I'll just say that it came late in the mail, I think it came after the vote.
It came long after the vote.
It came after the vote.
And we've never been able to figure out why, although I have my suspicion, my suspicion system. But the issue is that that, we spent hours coming up with that plan. It wasn't something that somebody said, oh, gee, wouldn't this be nice?
Right.
We interviewed a lot of people, we talked to a lot of people, we actually went and measured the offices down at the treatment plant. Because that's the closest thing you have to an office in this town. Right down the treatment plant. So we, you know, we made sure the offices were about comparable. And then we said, the other thing that we needed to do was the big room. Well, the big room, we said, we, we made the big room so it could be used as a meeting room for selectmen, it could be used as a room for voting. If you had a big forty crowd person wanna come and discuss road closures or something, they didn't have to go over to the firehouse, they had a, you had a place for them to go. The size of that room is what's in the firehouse. It wasn't something we dreamed up, we, we went over and we measured the space in the firehouse.
In the meeting room section, or the other section?
The meeting room, and also
The halls.
And also where you, where you signed in.
Okay.
Okay? That was, you know, so that's all been done. So don't sit here and spin your wheels and say, oh, gosh, we need to, we need to do this again because it's been done. So my question to you is, you need to decide, and that's what we had to do. And then we said to these people, okay, what's it gonna cost, you know, give us an idea of what it's gonna cost to build this thing, uh, for you. I mean, we're paying them, folks, okay? I'm not, we're not talking about paying, uh, the cost of building it, but we're gonna have to hire these people. How much is it gonna cost us for you to come down and work with these, with, with us? Mainly the people who live in this building. Well, we got all kinds of information and numbers, and we picked two things. The number that was the most reasonable and co- and with, with the outfit that was going to give us the best vision of what we wanted. They listened to us and they said, okay, this is what we can do for you. And that's how we ended up with the firm that we ended up with. Okay, so we, you know, that's been done already here. So, it pains me, quite honestly, to listen to you folks, sit here, and, and spin around and around and around on this again. Really does. In, in their defense, this is the first time.
But I see where you're, I see where you're coming from. Totally.
Mike?
Uh, after, uh, what they did, uh, the, the previous board, and you see diagrams out here, uh, three other firms, three thousand dollars a piece for conceptual drawing, where, again, did the same thing, came in, talked to staff, they wanted, well, some more than others, actually wanted to know, hey, who's the first person they see when they walk in the door? And who's the second person? Who gets the most traffic? You know, and, and went through and laid out the, laying out design plans. Same, same thing as, as Frank said. And, uh, they've, they've been here for, uh, all to see. You just, you just focus this diagram, so I wanna make sure you get those and take a look at them. That's what, that's led us to the RFP. So, we're back, even again after he did it, so, um-
And the RFP went out, and some of the same people replied to the RFP, and it came down, when we got all through, came down to the same few people.
Yes.
So, the issue you have here is, you know, before you, before you beat yourselves to death having meetings on what are we gonna do for, look over all this stuff. You have now gotten everything, and the other thing that you can do, you know, I hate to say it, but you have people here who have been through this, who you didn't know had been through this. You had no clue. Kofi, and Lamb, and Hudson's, and some of the other people had done this for, I don't know, three, four years. I don't know how many years we served on this committee, uh, just lately, okay?
Iyani Brunel, Lily, Thomas Dickinson.
Some of those people are dead.
No, I know.
We're talking active members of work.
Right.
Some of them are not. So, the issue you have here is, you know, this is a resource that's available to you when you get to the point where you say, okay, we've looked over all the, all the RFPs. This is what we've come up with. This is the outfit that we think that we wanna go with. Now, what are you gonna do? Are you, you know, I've heard, oh, put out, put this out for a couple of people, you know, for the voters to vote on a couple of plans. Voters are gonna look at the plans and they're gonna, they're gonna say, which one's the cheapest?
Right.
Right. That, it's not, the rest of it isn't gonna matter. They're gonna look at it and they're gonna say, okay, which one of these two plans is gonna be the cheapest? That's the one we'll go with.
Well, that's why we need to put together a communication plan to the public to, to provide them all the documentation and the cost comparisons.
Of what?
Whatever we choose to go with.
But you have to make the choice.
Correct.
That works best. You have to look at this, you have to take all, you have to do what we did.
But we still have to justify our decision.
Yeah, to who?
To the, to the voters.
We're gonna have to justify that to yourself.
Well, yeah, justify the decision.
I'm not paying attention for that. I'm not yelling loud enough in this ear.
Well, you've been yelling pretty good.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
No, no, that's good. We've been through this.
I understand his frustration.
But the board of public opinion, okay, you put this beautiful thing out, I'm not denying these guys did all the work, but you didn't win it. You didn't get the vote. Right. You gotta ask yourself why you didn't get the vote. Is there two floors in this? I'm, I'm listening to people on the street. This Jim Winchester is not speaking for Jim Winchester.
Right.
I'm speaking to what people told me about this plan. Is there two floors in it? Was there an elevator in it? There was one time an elevator.
Nope.
Okay.
There is an elevator.
Okay?
Yeah, there's a-
No, no.
There's a walkout.
What's that chat for?
That is provisions for an elevator.
Provision for an elevator.
At the time, we had a constable. And we were gonna make a room down, a locker, right? Okay. Uh, Williamstown just had a locker room. Federal government says you have to free back here.
Right.
Uh, free this. All this stuff got in. I'm telling you what people said. This, this is gonna involve, we're gonna have a constable downstairs, maybe. We was all talking about it. We all talked in the night.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and you're, you're frustrated, so are the townspeople. You gotta come up with something that sells.
Exactly.
In the meantime, in the meantime, the rescue squad built a nice little building down there that everybody kinda likes. It wasn't two stories, easy and accessible. We have meetings in there. The library put on a nice addition with a nice room. Uh, things have gone on here. Uh, it, it just pound needs something this big. It's just too fancy for us. I'm, I'm just saying what the people said, why we didn't sell this. There's one part of the planning, the last part of it, over the septic system, the selling was the hardest part. The engineers came in with all the fancy talk. These guys are gonna come in and sell you what they wanted to. They're gonna make a buck on it. They wanna, you're gonna have to listen to them, right? The sewer people came in here to do the same thing. And boy, there was hell raised. We don't need this, we don't need that. The engineer was a sweetheart. He listened, he took more abuse, you were swearing at, you could take a stick at. But he hung with it, and we voted for it. We sold it. And you remember that? And that was a big issue in Congress, the sewer problem. It was not a, you're gonna find out, the sell. It's a sell, it's a sell.
Yeah, it's selling it to the voters, that, that's what we wanna be able to try to do.
And they're scared, hell, you're gonna lose your school, uh, somebody's gonna take it away. That's a nice building, uh, maybe it'll come back to us. I'm just repeating what people, the fear of people are. They all know you guys did your homework. They all know this was a sewer project. And they all know you bought the land at a good price. You probably couldn't buy that for a hundred and twenty-five thousand today.
Not today.
I understand that. So, your point was, really, that we own the land. Walker, it said, it makes sense to build the lane wrong. Why go out and enrich somebody else, pick, pick somebody else off the property?
Walker said something that makes sense.
Oh, here we go.
Okay. I'll let you go with that one.
At the time.
At the time.
At the time. But there is, there is a lot of frustration. But the sell, you guys are gonna have to sell it. And you're gonna listen to a lot of people, they're gonna put a lot of stuff in your head, and, uh, common sense, this is powerful. Do we need something this big? Do we, uh, can we afford it? Who's coming in here to, uh, you know, is the racetrack gonna open again, and all this stuff?
What are you gonna need for future growth?
Sure, I haven't done this a couple of times. One of the things you'll find with architectural and engineering firms is, this is to them an art. And they want awards, they wanna be published. We want a simple building. So, it's incumbent upon us, once we get a floor design and a plan together, to bring them back down to earth. They, I don't need a bunch of architectural, we don't want nooms and, you know, gargoyles and stuff, and parapets. We want a square building. We want it operated efficiently, right? And we want it to fit in with the character of the town. And we ultimately boil down to, distill down to, this siding costs this much, this siding costs this much. How long is this gonna last compared to this? What kind of tile do you want rubbed? That's when you start getting into the weeds and you'll start working it down. And then, now, then you, then you have a price, you have a design, you have the architect or the engineer, they make a nice model, they do something like that. And what I'm understanding is, in fact, from some of the people that did this, was that they didn't put as much time into marketing and, and asking questions and being engaged with the public. And we, we've heard all what perceived to be the mistakes. Let's not do them again.
Well, I'd, I'd like to think that's what we're trying to avoid here.
Keep a, just a nice, simple building, you know, for what we need, nothing exotic. And I've talked to a couple of these folks, and they're thinking eight hundreds. Eight hundred, let's quote it, eight hundred and twelve, ballpark figure. But then, same, going back to them and saying, no, 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 you don't need all this new. Just give me a square building. There was a proposal for two stories that, that, that would commit at the same price. So, uh, they're out there and they're, they're trying to find ways to make this economical for us. And, yeah.
Go ahead, Steve.
Back to your two stories versus cutting it down for a one level. On any chunk of property, you have to put some sort of footings in the floor. The price difference of a full basement versus footings in retaining walls is about maybe, maybe fifty percent more to put the full foundation. So, when you're doing that, that price is very small, considering the value you get for your buck. And that's why, with the land the way it laid there, we did the basement, cause we could have a walkout room downstairs. And the offices downstairs could be accessible with no elevator, all downstairs. All right? And it didn't cost that much for the basement. If we didn't eat it today, that's great. We got storage, we had a mechanical room. Anybody that's ever lived a house without a cellar knows, that's kind of a nuisance. And you got a whole basement. That's great if you got a problem and need something. So, that was built in. Plumbing, we had plumbing roughed into the design to the basement. It wasn't put in, but it was roughed in for a couple of reasons, one of which being the park. If we were gonna utilize the park for a banquet, picnic, anything that went on, we would actually have restroom facility instead of the little blue houses that people love. And, you know, that is, but anyway, that would be there to open up for them. So, future thinking again, the most we could get for our buck out of this. We don't need those rooms downstairs right now. It remains future. And if you put a building up and renovate it, and then five years from now, you have to put an addition on it. They're gonna be cheaper, and somehow you gotta make it look right to fit. And anybody's putting additions on, they're always, you know, if you can build it right the first time, and obviously expense-wise.
But it's selling it to the voters.
Exactly. You've gotta sell it. This was, the way this was designed, like I said, line sync, we had two companies that were right on board with us, that were in our heads, pretty close to our thinking. Joseph with line sync and myself worked extremely good together. We had a view of that valley. And when I'd say something, he was already thinking of it and vice versa. This is why we come up with the design we did. I'll get ahead of myself and back up the rescue squad. Oh, the first year I was on the board, I had talked to the rescue squad. And did a very poor job with the select board at the time, promoting it to the town. The rescue squad wanted to build a building. I proposed to them to build it there, in the lower section of a building. It must be on the top. They had adequate funds to get started. Didn't promote it properly, it didn't go anywhere, which was unfortunate because they had a lot of money that could've gone toward it. That was a, a promotion thing that we just talked about. The sewer project, the promotion was good, but you have to this day, and you go out and talk to some people around town and tell you, I'm not on that damn system, I never will. We had to pay for it. You're very upset. And they're not on it because they're out in the outskirts somewhere. And I told them the same story. I said, this is not a, a factual, a statement by nominees, but put it in your head as one. You had a school system over here that the sewer never worked in. You had a Band-Aid put on it. Every couple of years, you had to spend thousands of dollars to put a Band-Aid on that thing, that taxpayers paid for. It works now. So, you people in the outlaying area that paid to have this bond, two million dollar bond go in, just fix the school. You don't have to pay that money anymore. It's not the way it actually crossed, but that's the way it ended up. So, you are getting the bang for your buck with a sewer, even though it's not in writing that way. This building, again, I'll do my last punchline on this and leave it alone, cause this land was bought for this building, or this type of proposal. I think the town's function is right there because it's center of town. The beauty's there, and you have something, you have to eat this building. This sort of a building, sitting there, you get morning sun, you get afternoon sun. It's called passive solar. It'll help warm the building day through the days. There is so much opportunity that that building will take care of itself, as far as mold, the dampness and stuff like that, not being in a wetland area of any sort. The type of property that it's on versus other property you may look at, this comes in at a very high rating. My pitch is done.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
One shot in there.
Sure, Jim, go for it.
You spoke of one of the voters' kinda scary things. You mentioned the school. We built the school in Swamp. We went to the poll three times. We voted it down twice. And sure enough, the third time, everybody didn't give a care, and it got voted in. So, we, uh, whoever hauled the septic out for years made a fortune. And that's another fear of the voters, so to speak. We haven't voted for too many things in this town, if you count them up. School was a colossal favor, we thought. We built it in the swamp. We were told it was a swamp by people who lived here longer than we did. You know the names of them. And, uh, here we come. We're, we're just not comfortable as a community for voting for something, cause we think somebody's got it wrong. Can I say this about Paul?
You can say whatever you want. It's a free country.
I've lived here for over fifty years.
Trust is hard enough, Jim.
No, no, but I mean, it, it's tough to bring this town, this town together, cause they didn't grow up together. Right, North Palm, own fire department. School kids back when you were younger went to Housen Falls, we didn't have a school. Down in my area, down there around the store is, those kids went to Williamstown, to the high school. They were Frank lives, they went to Bennington, to Ben High, Ben Catholic. So, you had a generation that grew up here. These are the hardcore voters in their sixties, seventies. They didn't grow up here together. They had their fire stations where the communities were. You had four, five fire stations. Your Christmas parties, you didn't go to different. Everybody just kinda doesn't come together in a manner that a lot of places do. I love it here, hope I die here, but I mean, it's a tough act to bring them together. And that's what we're trying to do now, is bring together the voters that will buy something and feel comfortable that, that it's good for us. Hundred percent in your way is we own the land. It's being clear, probably couldn't buy it for, throw, throw a hundred and fifty thousand on just the land right now. When you start your number. So, you got three fifty in the bank, that's five, that's your half a million or better, if you were gonna start today, to pick up all pieces. And once these people understand, you know, we don't, it's too, this is Paul, we don't need that, we don't, those barriers are breaking down. The sewer broke it down. Uh, one of the biggest problems I had at the store when I opened up was the dog. Our dogs all over the store. You know, you can't feed a dog, they come back every day. The board, I think they run, just the lease law. We started with a lease law. It solved a lot of problems. Now, you get a rabies, you get a rabies, and people don't wanna pay, they, they registered their dogs now. You can find a dog and get a tag. Some of the simpler things we've done here, through these two guys being on the board, will argue and holler forever, but I, I have a lot of respect for you.
Well, I do too, for you.
And the, the thing is, just slowly, you know, don't rush in anything. A little simpler thing like the lease law, you're gonna find some uncomfortable things that are gonna happen about trying to clean up this town, which everybody talks about. It's a good move to have a new town office. It's a start. It's, bringing this town together, good luck to you.
Well, and, and which is true, absolutely. But then, I think that the other issue is you're not gonna do it on the first vote, you know? You're probably will take at least one or two more votes. The issue here is, like the school, if you really believe in the project, you pick yourself up, you dust yourself off, and you go back at it again and say, okay, that, you know, we'll, we'll lower the cost, we'll do what we have to do. What did I miss? And try to, you know, and, and go through it again. But you folks, five of you around this table, all have to work as a team and all have to agree, and you all have to go out and sell the same project. And, and that's the key. And if you don't, you will end up with what happened with the first vote we had. So, you know, I think you've got some, you know, Mike's given you some good ideas. You're, you're, you know, my issue is, you're, you're paying this guy. Listen to him. Because he's, he's telling you, he's done the research, which is the same research that we did. And he's come up with basically the And he's come up with basically the same conclusions that we came up with. We, we used to fight like hell when we used to have our little committee meetings. We used to go home at night and say, Jesus, I don't know whether I'm ever going to speak to that, those people like that.
Let me say what I think about these guys, and Mike, your problem is you're the new kid on the block too. Like this boy, who knows you. But these two guys, you'll argue with them, you'll get a black eye once in a while, but you'll never get a knife in their back. And that's, that's the way we operate. But Mike's another issue, we've never had a town administrator before. So there's another people, people don't trust. Who is this guy, what's he for? Do we have confidence like Frank just said, to say, Mike, we hired this guy, we had some people, checked his background, do we trust him? Let him do his job.
Hell breaking in, no people in it.
Smile down.
I'm getting soft.
Oh, you'll get soft, you know. I think you guys can quiet among yourselves.
We haven't trained you yet.
Be civil.
But I, I do think that that's, that's why I'm sitting here, I'm listening to this and saying, oh my God. Please don't go through this again because it's been, we've gone through it at least three times now. And the issue is that we come down to the same issue, the same people, the same issue, the same thing. Okay, we interviewed these people. The ones that wanted to be interviewed, you may find out that half of them blow you off and say, we're not coming down there to be interviewed with those people. You know, they have a reputation of, of, no, no way.
Sitting on it, yes.
The common denominator, Frank, is for all of us, everybody in town agrees that we need a new town office. For twenty-four years, thank you for adding four years to that.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Winchester, thank you.
But anyway, that's, that's kind of, you know, don't get into that track where you sit here and you chase each other around again. Because, Jimmy is right. Trust the people you hired to do the work. In our case, the board appointed us to be this committee. Trust the people that are on the committee. They can't make the decision. They can feed you all the information, which is what we did. And let.
We had nothing to gain out of it, other than we live here.
And the board, and the board made the decision in the end. It's, it's, you know, I mean, that's kind of, and Jimmy is right about the history of Powell. When I first came to Powell, we had four fire departments. And four fire numbers. And you had to know where you lived and what number you called. That got old pretty fast. So then we started to bring the fire departments together to where they are today. But, you know. It's going to take, you're going to get knocked down a few times, folks.
I think we all understand that. We just want to make sure that when we go to the voters, we want to go there with the best chance possible.
Right.
To get this passed.
Well, that's the key word that I, first time I heard it tonight, with the best chance possible. You can't go in there saying, oh, this is a sure deal, because you're never going to know if it's a sure deal. But I will guarantee you that if you present a proposal that is clear, that is as reasonable a price as you can get. And you sell, you go out and you sell it to the community.
Well, that's what we've been saying is what we want to do.
But you got to agree on the, the plan, and, and what I'm, you know, what happens here is that you've got, you've got one group over here pushing one plan, and you've got another group over here pushing another plan. You're the guys and girls that have to make that decision. You know, I could, you know, when you say to me, send this out to, we'll have a vote. Have a vote on what? Well, we have a couple of plans here. We'll have the voters will vote on the plans. Now you're going to have to educate them for, for two plans?
Well, this is all just part of the discussion part, you know.
Well, that's why I'm glad I'm here.
We don't want to spin our wheels forever, but we do need to move on, we appreciate the history lesson from everybody.
Definitely have educated us, enlightened us.
Either Mike Kaczak or Linda or somebody, and you may remember Frank, I do not, but I remember it being brought up. Didn't the board at one point through all the shuffle, come up with a fact and agree that that was the place the town office is going to be built?
That's what I'm.
It was brought up at one point, the decision was made, actually it was stated in the, when somebody interviewed somebody. But it wasn't beyond that, it was at a meeting.
I went through four years, that's all I could find at the time, four years.
So I don't, I don't think there was anything binding.
Right, there was nothing binding, there was a lot of.
The fact that we bought the land, you know.
No, this was after, way after. Because there were so many arguments on this, that, and everybody that had a building for sale was being thrown into the mix, which, you know, you can't look.
And I, just speaking for myself, I've heard a lot of different opinions and a lot of thoughts, and that's the roost, hillside house, other properties, you know, building new. Why can't you guys just stay in the current one you're in? I've heard it all, I'm sure everybody else here has.
Let's see that, there again, it's the education.
Yeah.
They don't understand what an office decision is.
Right, right.
Exactly.
I'm down to the five of you.
So we'll continue to, you know, move forward, take public comment.
Yep.
And ultimately, we will have to make a decision as to what option goes to the voter.
And anybody on our, so defunct board is always available.
And I'm sure we'll probably, we'll reach out to some, all. Whoever's willing to come talk.
As a board member or as community members.
Sure, you are all always welcome. Thank you.
Thank you guys both for coming in for all the hard work you've done over the years.
Oh my God.
Part of our town.
Don't miss those chairs, huh? Don't miss those chairs.
Your jacket and your, your other stuff.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion for a five minute break?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion for a five minute recess.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry to take all of your time here, guys.
Good night, people.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Aye, all opposed? Bob?
Aye.
Alright, we're reconvening.
Okay.
For all of you that have hung in there with us, thank you.
Color painting time with Mr. Green Jeans now.
Uh, I feel like the wheels have come off the bus. Okay, so. Bob, did you receive the email?
I did not. Let's not, no need, don't wait for me.
Alright. Yeah, I was going to say, let's just go down the questions, we'll read them out. Alright, so, first one, please describe your approach to engage, to engaging the public in presenting the project. Then what is the cost of your participation? What is the cost of your participation in public presentation? What type of project plan will you use? Who will be our point of contact during construction? How often will the project manager be onsite and how are trades managed? How do you assure quality control? Describe how you will manage construction of the safe, its environmental controls, and what process will be used to move extremely old and delicate public records to the new site? Describe your approach to code compliance during construction? How are change orders processed? How will the new building be positioned for explanation, expansion in the future? What is your approach to energy efficiency? What incidentals are included? Who will provide the first proposal with economical features and allow us to upgrade as we see fit? Or will, sorry, will you provide? Can you guarantee prices through the life of the project? And describe turnover to the town and how we approach punch lists? There, I think I butchered that appropriately.
You did good.
Okay, well. Do any of these stand out to anybody that they have any concerns or questions about?
I think number, one and two can actually be combined. Engaging and then the cost of presenting.
How are you going to do it and how much is it going to cost?
Right. With their best feed, best feedback from past, past presentations.
Yep.
Questions are on the way, Mr. Job.
Thank you, Mike.
Oh, good, because I obviously can't spell, so I forgot the name in Powell.
Uh, I had concern with the construction of the safe and the moving of the documents. Was that in the RFP for them being responsible for moving the documents?
No, they're not moving physically the documents, they're providing storage space.
Yeah, well, it says here, and what process will be used to move extremely old and delicate public records? That's why I was wondering.
So there's, there's going to have to be a process.
For moving them, well, that's what I was wondering, are they going to be responsible for that? Because I thought we were, we were going to have to do that ourselves.
I don't know that we wanted to do that, do we want to do that, or we want to have somebody professionally managing that? I mean, they're delicate.
Well, that's why I'm asking. I didn't think that was in the RFP.
You know more about those documents than I do.
We're not in exactly a very controlled environment, so I think we can handle that.
Okay.
That's what I would think.
Okay, that can be scratched, okay.
Okay.
So we're going to.
At least that part of that question.
Pre-existing safe.
No, we're going to.
No, just, we're going to move the documents ourself from the old safe.
The safe's going to be new.
Okay, well, that's, alright, that's where I was concerned.
I just looked at the town charter, you know, King Charles, some old stuff.
I think it's very important to have.
I'm going to have you carry that one.
God save the king.
Um, I think it's really important to make sure that they specify the change order process because that can start adding up costs without us paying close attention, so they better have a multi-sign off on change orders.
But there, that's, that's when we need to be specific when we're looking at the
The plans.
The layout.
Right.
Ourselves also, so we have the proper verbiage.
Oh.
So.
Yep. Um, the question about how will the new building be positioned for expansion in the future? Um, I believe we can propose the positioning of the old building based on the previous town office committee's layout, which has the, the property positioned for that walkout on that downhill slope piece right there. I, I mean, I.
Well, that's what their two-story design though.
Well, it's kind of an English walkout they're talking about.
Right.
What I comment with this, maybe you could change it, is you want to position the building that the sun, the view, those types of things, at the same time, you want to make sure that you have some kind of capacity for expansion. How do you put all those things together, maybe I didn't phrase it correctly. You know, some of the things they were talking about, yes, you know, the sun, naturally heating the building and cooling the building and the view, all the aesthetic things combined with how do we make it efficient so that we can move ahead in the future? How they combine those aspects of it.
Because you're going to get the sun three quarters of the day.
Yeah.
Which will be very.
So that can kind of tie in with the whole, the efficiency of it.
Right, well, I, I, and I think that'll come from the discussion with whomever is selected.
Yeah. That's all stuffed.
Yeah, right, and that ties in with the energy efficiency.
They all did site surveys, so they've all got clear in their mind.
So they all know what land they're going to be working with.
I was out there with them, they did site surveys.
And how often a project manager will be onsite? My question is, are we going to have a clerk of the works onsite?
Well, there's, that's up to us, there's a construction management process. One would say that this perhaps is too small of a project for construction management. I know about it, I never had to use it. They say it's a cost savings, they say it's more efficient. Essentially, the construction manager gets to a certain point in the project and says, okay, I'm going to bid out concrete. I'm going to bid out, you know, so he's controlling those costs as he moves along, and it's a cost savings. So if you have a construction manager, he is in fact kind of the clerk of the works.
Okay, that's why I'm, I didn't know if there's, if they were combining that job or not, that's what I was.
And that's something we want to get a feel for, what they're comfortable with, because they're working with different firms. They all have firms that they're kind of embraced with.
And are they local firms or are they out of state firms?
Can we dictate that we would like them to hire local tradespeople?
Yeah, actually, you know, when, when you're setting price points, you're not going to go to Massachusetts because that's union work. Yeah, so. So that expands that question a little bit, you know.
Well, if we're also trying to drive down costs, I mean, no offense, but going local isn't always going to be the cheapest option. So at what point do we draw the line in the sand and say?
Five percent, that's what the policy says, five percent. So, or, let me check.
I thought you had said like ten percent before.
No, I, I got to check, it's either two point five or five percent, but there's, there's a margin whereby if the, a local guy is within a certain percentage, we have an obligation to take them, even though it's a little bit higher. I can look it up if you want.
Yeah, sure, I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Mike.
We'll continue on without you, Mike. Good luck on your mission.
For the project management question, if I could chime in here real quick.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
For the project management question, I think, um, if we could change that question a little bit to say, uh, describe your project management process. Um, one thing, I don't want to, I don't want to send the message with the question that we want them to be onsite all the time because that might be additional cost.
Drive up the cost.
About whether or not we're, we're really concerned about whether or not the project's being managed efficiently and things, things keep moving along. So I'm all in favor of, of course, of the project manager taking control of the project. If it's not managed by a project manager, it's going to, it's going to go over on time, which is going to go over on cost, all those things.
Right.
I'm, I'm, uh, uh, but I'd also don't want to send a message that we need them onsite all the time.
How do you want to reword that, Bob?
Uh, please explain your, your process, please explain your project management, management procedures.
Okay.
Is that, and I'm, you know, I'm open to suggestions also, but something along those lines.
Well, I think by asking it that way, Bob, we'll, we'll get the answer that we're looking for because they'll probably cover all that. And if they say, oh, we, we generally like to put a project manager onsite all the time, well, then that can drive us to say, well, what, you know, what?
Is that figured into your current cost or is that incidental on top of?
Right.
Right, now, is that going to be?
People were, if I'm reading this correctly, I think we're more interested in the project management process. You know, how do you define the critical path, what do you do, uh, how do you manage projects? What, what kind of scope creep are you controlling, that, that sort of thing.
Right.
Yep.
But.
You know, I think we want to ask it in a general way so that we know that they know what they're talking about when they answer specifically.
Yeah, you don't want to lead them.
Right.
Right, right.
Um, which goes to Harry's point, the question about what incidentals aren't, aren't, are included? What incidentals, you know, haven't we considered?
Well, like the point of contact.
They're not going to give those up.
The point of contact.
We could just ask this, is there anything that we haven't considered that you would bring, bring up?
Right.
I mean, we need to have some control onsite, so we know that they're following the plans, I guess is where I, the point I'm trying to make. Otherwise, you'll have an electrician come in and say, oh, it's this free space, I'm running my stuff this way. Then plumber comes in, don't, well, the plumbing plans said I'm supposed to be here, now the electrician already put my stuff here.
We're going to appoint you to oversee it.
This is the things that.
I second that nomination.
What you got to take and think about when doing this.
Okay.
I think to, to that point, when you get to that, that's going to come down to once we pick somebody, getting it all worked out and planned out.
Right.
Right, and we need to.
Go ahead, Bob.
I'm sorry, we need to distinguish between construction supervision and project management, those are two different things.
Yep.
Yeah, we don't want to pay a project manager to micromanage.
I apologize, sir, the book is messed up, I don't know, I've got, I'm glad I got to look at it because everything is.
Well, that's why I wish you luck.
Yeah. You're going to have to go through it and put everything back in order.
In my experience, I've never had anybody able to guarantee prices through the life of the project because you don't know what you don't know.
Right.
Yeah, materials fluctuate daily.
Right.
That's a tough one.
So, I, I I get the point of the question because we don't want them overrunning just because they feel they can. We want them to stick to a specific price and not utilize the full amount just because they can.
Yeah.
So let's just ask that differently.
How long can they guarantee the price through the life of the project? How long they could.
Right, well, to Brian's point, I don't know if they can because, you know, sheet rock costs something today, it's going to cost something different.
Oh, yeah, overnight, yeah.
Yeah, well.
Ten years from now when we make a decision.
Well, it's like when you get, well, it's like when you get a contractor to, you know, quote, you know, remodeling your kitchen. If they bid it, then if they overrun, it's on them.
Right.
But if you're paying them as you go, then.
Right.
They add to their cost, there is a certain percentage they add for overrun.
Exactly.
And then at the end of the day, they either use that overrun or they add it back, or they give it back.
So I guess if, if they're going to figure in an overrun, then they don't have an incentive to not, to not use it.
Right.
It depends on, depends on the contractor, somebody. It depends on, depends on the contractor, if somebody's above board, and, you know, I've, I've had, uh, people say, "Hey, you know, you got some money back, we were able to get this at lower cost." I did my nine-one-one center, and they gave me money back.
Okay. I think it's a matter of how well we work with them.
Yeah.
That all speaks to the second to the last question, can you guarantee prices through the life of the project?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we were talking about.
I don't really think they can, I mean, we can-
Which we'll think of.
Well, we can ask them about the, the cost overrun, what they, what they put aside for contingencies in the event that they're anticipating, whatever.
We're thinking about the same thing, we just have to frame it into a question.
And, you know, with the, going back to the project manager, you know, how often they're gonna be onsite and how are trades managed? You know, if they're bidding out each individual project to different ones, that's part of controlling the costs.
Right.
Um, what do you mean by describe turnover to the town, are you talking about turnkey?
Turning over the building to the town, punch list, punch process.
Yeah, okay, well, I got the punch list piece, I wasn't sure about-
I don't want to go into the horizon, I'm just holding a list of fuck, it's not done right.
Right.
Okay.
So we, generally, you set us timeframe for that, and then you also-
We have a responsibility.
Right, a warranty, um, factor in there generally also.
So I would assume that that should be covered in the previous questions when we talk about, um, their approach to project management.
Well, what, how they manage crashing a project.
Correct.
Right.
It was a good question.
So that could be lumped into there, and we should just, like, come up with the question and then put bullet points of what we're looking for, for them to touch on.
It, it means they're out of the term, crashing a project, you're all familiar with that term. If you're doing a project and, uh, carpenters come in here, and wiring comes in here, and the plumbing comes in here, and the carpenters go on strike, and now you've got these two trades sitting there on their thumbs, waiting for these guys, how do they manage that?
Right.
Because that's cost overrun.
Right.
And what are they gonna do in the interim?
That's a good question.
And that, that, I'm not saying that would be the scenario, but lumber wasn't delivered, we don't know why.
Yeah, so now you have a crew onsite with nothing to do.
Right.
And the problem with that is, that crew's bid a job on another place, and three weeks from now, they're expecting to be over there.
Yep.
You're gonna lose them.
Right, or they're gonna leave only a few people here and take more people over.
So, no, that's a good question to ask, like, how are you gonna manage that?
Right.
What, what are your contingencies?
So maybe we shorten the number of ques- or, not shorten the questions, but combine some of the questions, but throw in some key items that we are going to be looking for, for them to touch on. And if they don't-
A, B, C, or whatever.
Correct, like, we're gonna ask this question, and this is what we're looking for for response, we're looking for information pertaining to X, Y, and Z.
Not bad plan.
And then that way, we'll be asking more condensed, fewer questions. I like that.
And then maybe we can try to stay within the half-hour timeframe.
Now, um, uh, from the, from the responses we got from the BLTC lawyer, we can ask questions specific. It's good to have a, a, a list of questions that we're gonna ask everybody, but we can be, we can be specific about their proposals as well. So I, I think, um, um, we should probably, uh, if, if, if it's a half an hour apiece, we should probably designate a little bit of time for each of us to add any questions we want.
Well, I think we need to limit maybe one question each, because any question, um, I might come up with ten.
Yeah, because just covering the, I was gonna say, just covering all the questions that we're gonna have pre-formatted.
Right.
Is probably gonna use a good chunk of the time, unless the person sitting there is just like, "I don't know, I don't know."
It won't be a long interview.
Well, right.
It might behoove us, to Bob's point, that if there is a specific question that one of us wants to ask of a particular, um, submission, that we email that to Michael to compile, so that if we all have the same question for the same person, we can at least see-
Well, it may come up in conversation, I think is what Bob was saying. While we're talking with the individual.
Bob?
Yeah, that's, 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 that's very much a possibility, we could be talking to them, there all, could also be specific questions about one, about one proposal that wouldn't be a, you know, relative, that wouldn't be, uh, relevant to a, a different proposal. You know, we got, uh, five different proposals to ask questions about. Um, one of the questions I think we ought to add to all of them, though, is, um, uh, is, is, um, is, uh, what, what, what approach, uh, of the three options, which one are you, which one are you leaning toward? And what is your, what is your high-level estimate at this point?
Okay.
Because I, I don't think we've got that from all of them, right? You're going through these, I know we've got, we've got, uh, the high-level estimate from a few of them, but not from all.
Yeah, only verbally, Bob, you got, that's a good question, it's only, the only thing that was expressed was verbally. And that's, that doesn't cut it.
Don't I have, uh, don't we have a description of cost, budget and cost phase one, budget and cost phase two, for one?
Yes.
Yes, I don't, I don't think anybody did all three projects, no.
No, not from what I was reading.
Uh, right, and most of them we don't, you're right, um, but we do on two of them. And I don't think we have a real clear indication of which method, or which, which of the three options they're leaning toward.
So that's a good question to ask them, then.
Yeah.
Will you put, will you provide first proposal with economic, economical features to allow us upgrades as we see fit? That falls under the punch list that Marlena brought up.
Town administrators, line green, shagro.
Actually, since, um, if I could chime in again, um, I, I have to add. So, um, uh, just a, just a question for, for the other board members is, um, of the three options that we gave to each one of these firms, are we in agreement or not in agreement that, uh, our preference on, on those three options is really whatever is most economical? Or, or do we, do we as board members, and of course, we could easily disagree with each other, uh, uh, or do we as board members, um, uh, like one of the options better? Does that make sense?
Well, I think each one of us probably has a preference already, but I don't know if that would be appropriate to discuss at this point, without having, you know, without meeting with them.
Couldn't you frame that question, um, kind of generically, and everybody will grade that answer differently?
Well, my thought to his question was, if we all express what our opinions are now, then it almost becomes pointless asking them what their preference is, because they're gonna, if we all say, "Well, we want to move the schoolhouse," none of them are gonna even touch on the other two options at that point.
Right.
Well, no, that's, that's kind of it, that's kind of it, Brian, but I was more, I was more leaning toward, um, do we have a preference for the message, or is it mostly, uh, is it mostly, uh, the cost that's driving it? Like, if moving the schoolhouse was a viable option, uh, and, and it was the most economical, um, I think, uh, that, that, if those two things were true, that would be very different than moving the schoolhouse, and it costs more than the other two options.
I think at this point, though, Bob, if you're looking at it from a structural, uh, perspective, and you're looking at longevity and how it lasts, and how it's gonna be in the weather and all those types of things, I think you can make an argument that modular or stick, uh, they're, they're both more than adequate, I guess.
Function and cost, it's gonna come down to a balancing act between the two of them, I mean-
Function and cost and future growth.
Yeah, it's like, whether you do sheeting with plywood or oriented strand board. Oriented strand board's cheaper, and I don't know that we're gonna be around in fifty years to see if it fails, you know? Most places go with oriented strand board.
You keep the moisture out of it, it lasts a long time.
Absolutely, yeah.
But that's, well, I was gonna say, that all comes down to, uh, the discussion when it comes to the planning part.
Right.
Trimming costs, what are you willing to go with?
They say we want, you know, when AC plywood for sheeting, I'm gonna go, "Oh, no, absolutely not." It's only fifty bucks a sheet, if that.
Marlena's making a list, and we're all watching intently.
I know, keep talking, I'm trying to make sure I'm grabbing everybody's questions correctly.
I'm checking her spelling. That was the goodest.
So, it, as far as like what incidentals are included, do we want to have any specifically loaded for that? Like, from what I was reading through some of these, uh, some of them make it a point to say, you know, "We're not gonna include this permit, you're responsible for this, we'll do this, you do that." Some specifically call out that we're responsible for site surveys, other ones don't.
Mm-hmm.
So that's all stuff, like, you know, one of them included an estimate that they had gotten from somebody they work with for a site survey, but the other ones don't provide any of that, so that's, that's the stuff I want to know, because-
You nail it on the head, that's exactly why I was asking that question.
Okay, go back to that one.
As far as the incidentals?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, well, the, my first point was, as far as like permitting, uh, some of them call out that they'll work with us and do all the permitting, and some of them flat-out say, "We're responsible for the Act 250." Some don't even mention about site surveying, but another one, I forget which one, specifically says that we are responsible for site survey, and then they included, I'm not gonna say which one, but included a, an estimate.
Financially, you're gonna pay for it anyway, right? The reason why I want them to do it is because I want to make-
I want to know is it in the total cost, or is it, we're gonna have the bill from them, and then another thirty, forty thousand dollars on top of it?
But I don't want the liability of them coming back and saying, "Oh, we told you this was the way it was, and you got the permit, and, you know, you're the one who took them through it." I want them to go through the permitting process, we're gonna pay for it anyway.
Well, yeah.
But I want them to actually-
It's the responsibility part of it.
Yeah, I want the liability on them. That's what I want.
Okay.
Right, so, just reading the, uh, the archery itself, um, I mean, the only, the only place that permitting is, is, uh, is in the RFP is, is the architect shall provide guidance and assistance to the town with all required state and local permitting processes, presentations, and applications, but it doesn't say they pay for them.
Doesn't mean we can't ask for them.
Like I said, Bob, we're gonna pay for it either way you look at it, whether they, whether they put it into the bottom line price.
To me, the que- to me, it was more of, are they gonna do the legwork, or do we then have to task somebody else to do the legwork to run down the permits?
Assist.
Well, assist could be as simple as like, "Hey, you need to do this, call that guy."
They're gonna-
That's technically assisting.
Yeah, and then how, well, they frame the question, is how are you assist us, and how do you walk us through this?
Well, uh, what I was thinking, what I was thinking about there was, was that, uh, what this means, though, is that we've got some work to do, because there's gonna be costs that fall onto the town that these firms are not taking up, and we've gotta estimate all of them. We've gotta get them estimated somehow, because aren't those included in the ballot article?
Not necessarily, Bob, I think we can go back and we can ask them to include those types of costs. If we, if we weren't clear in the RFP, we can, we can amend that and ask them to resubmit, we could do that, I believe, after we select who we want to, um, potentially utilize, we can say, "Okay, um, we like your designs, but we need to know what the cost for this is going to be." We didn't ask it in the original RFP, but we need to know now.
Or addend it to say we want turnkey.
Mm-hmm.
Which, which means that we need to itemize the things that, that we're gonna have to go back and ask them to include, that aren't part of the proposal. It's not just permitting, right, there might be other things.
Yeah.
Just say, just let's just say turnkey.
Right. We, we could, we could, but we didn't propose it that way, so the-
No, I didn't.
There could be significant cost overruns, but, I mean, that, those are discussions that we can have, we can ask them for a complete list.
Yeah, and who knows, maybe we'll get surprised, and some of them might have already anticipated that.
And the rationale for doing it this way is, you, you've got one of them in there, he lists everything in terms of hours and what he's doing, but he lists the, the fees on a different page, which means I gotta go through and figure out what each of the disciplines are gonna cost.
Yep.
On some others, very succinct, on exactly what they're going to do, and how much it's gonna cost in the total for that particular portion. That's why I did it that way. I want to know exactly what you're gonna do and how much it's gonna cost me. And then it, you see it, and it's like nine font, and you gotta, you have Microsoft to look at it, but they're very clear, that's, when I look at that, I'm looking at exactly what am I, what are you doing at this particular phase in the project? I, you give me the price over here, and then you list a bunch of stuff down on total hours, now I gotta go give the arithmetic.
Right.
That doesn't help me. Am I making sense?
No, I know, I know. I know exactly what you're saying, so.
Yeah, I found that going through the proposals, it was very difficult to understand what the, uh, what the upfront costs are, and what the total costs were. Uh, the total cost wasn't in a lot of them, um, but, uh, but even then, I mean, uh, it's, knowing that it's a hundred and forty dollars an hour for an architect, does really help me if I don't know how many hours the architect do.
You'd only go back to school, huh?
Yep. Well, hopefully, at least one of them watches part of this meeting and will come prepared.
Check out the odds.
Um, I think we've gotten it down to maybe six questions total.
And then added a couple.
Well, I think it's six questions total with, with, with the two that we added, because we've combined so many things, and some of the items that were questions, I kind of put in as items that should be hit on when we ask the question.
Now, are we, these pre-formatted ones, are we gonna submit these to these individuals ahead of time?
I don't, I don't recommend that, no.
No, no, we don't.
I want to see their reaction.
Mm-hmm, yep, normally you don't, they should be prepared to answer them.
And I've talked to the, like I said, you can have them all sitting out in the room, playing tennis, before they come in, doesn't matter. Don't have to worry about that.
Well, I was gonna say, you know, the last one in line's gonna be waiting almost two hours before they get their turn, or we get a-
Yeah, I doubt they're gonna wait for two hours, I'm just saying, you know, if there's an overlap and one is sitting with another.
It, that, it's okay.
Not a big deal.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I kind of missed that question, um, are, are we talking about how we're gonna bring, bring them in? Like, we've got five firms, I was, I was thinking that if we did it over, over two different sessions, we could do three at one point, and then two at another point, and we can give them what time we're gonna, you know, what half-hour slots they're gonna be, they need to be here for.
Right, that's not a bad idea.
That's kind of what I was alluding to, I didn't want to make all, all of them sit out there at the same time.
No, that's, no.
Because then I don't want to get a bill from each one of them for time wasted either.
Right.
And were we going to allow them to call in?
Um, that's up to you.
You can do it as a call-in as well.
It's up to you, you can do a call-in, you can do a Skype, but that's up to you, I, I don't know.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. It's communication.
We would have to do it here, right, um, and when we did huge contracts with the state of Vermont, we would have the vendors on the phones, because they were all over the country, so. You, you didn't bring them in just to ask them questions.
You, you are asking, interviewing them, so they have the right to bring in supplemental information to wow you. So if they have something in their hand, they can, they can do that.
Right.
So that's the benefit of having them.
But if they choose to not come in with, say, "Well, I can, I can do a teleconference with you,"
Then we can-
we, we will allow that, is what we're asking.
Up to you, I, I wouldn't be against it.
I'm okay with it, I mean, I would prefer they come in, but-
Um, it may surprise you to hear this, but I'm okay with calling in.
Get out of here, Bob, shut the front door.
I'm coming to join you, Margaret.
I just find it weird talking to a machine with a blue light in the middle of the table, Bob, so, like, I, it's very awkward to not have eye contact with you, so I just stare at the blue light when talking to you.
We gotta get a bobblehead doll for you when you're not here.
He should wear a blue beanie cap the next time he comes in.
I'll set it there.
Alright, so then, uh, if we got the questions part down, I guess it comes down for me, when do we try to schedule this?
Soon as possible.
Yeah. Like, try to do this like for, warn a special meeting during the week, try to do this as a weekend?
I'm fine with whatever, just as soon as possible. I was gonna say during the week, because most of them probably work full-time. Right. So that, I don't know, you know, weekends.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, they work full-time, so I'm thinking hours-wise, like, doing something this late.
This is their job.
Yeah, looking for a weekend.
What's our calendar look like, so we can propose a couple of dates, I guess.
Anything scheduled for May is May two, special meeting.
Okay.
Could we, um, what, uh, I just say, hey, suggest it is, uh, on the, during the hiring committee, um, which is, is a, is, is, you know, doesn't have a lot of parallels, I guess, but it does have a few, uh, we did most of the, that on weekends, we did, uh, like Saturdays when we were doing interviews.
But those are, those are individuals, so there might be multiple people from, I, I don't know, I, um-
Well, that's why I brought it up like-
Do building firms have more than one, you know, would they normally have more than one person that would be talking to us, or would it be one individual, one?
I would, yeah, they're gonna send one person, I mean, if they want to send a group, I guess they can do that, but-
They don't normally do that.
Yeah.
Well, they, you might-
I was gonna say, all the project contracts that we did was ten, twelve, fifteen people, so.
Like, six P M. Like, six P M. Like, we, yeah, six P M to seven or eight.
I'm fine with six.
Yeah. Any day but a Monday, please.
So no Mondays?
Any day's fine with me.
And we know, Bob. What if you're traveling, Bob? Do you know if we can teleconference in more than one person?
Yeah, should be.
If you have to teleconference in to listen? Or do we just, do you call one of our phones and?
Um, I'm told that we can do it, but I don't think we've ever done it.
Okay, we'll have to figure that out.
Uh, we can do it legally, we just, physically, how we do it is up in the air.
Yeah, we don't know if this is.
Probably have to practice, set it up and do it for somebody.
Are you, how much on the road are you during May?
Um, I, I will be on the road a bit in May, so, um, um.
Do you have any days you know you're gonna be home?
I'm sorry?
Do you know, if, do you know if you have any days that you'll definitely be home?
Uh, I, I am, uh, I am, I'm definitely in the, uh, in, at home, I'm definitely in town over the week of May sixth.
So, second week.
May sixth, I'll keep it there.
Okay.
Two nights.
What day of the week is that?
May sixth.
Um, I think it's a Tuesday?
Uh.
May sixth is a Monday, so I can't do Mondays, so the week of the sixth.
I said a week.
He's saying a week.
Okay, a week. Seventh through the eighth?
Yeah, the sixth, I'm out of town, so I can't do that, but the other days I can.
Okay, Wednesday, the eighth works for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Six o'clock? Oh, you know what, we have economic development committee until si- uh, at six.
Yes, we do.
Alright, so Wednesday's out.
Uh, Tuesday? Works for me.
Tuesday works for me.
Tuesday, the seventh? Does that work for you, Bob?
Running a little late, but.
That works for me.
Got training up in Roland that day.
Oh, for fire department or for?
For, uh, the tax abatement.
What time does it get over?
I'm not sure, I haven't got all the details.
Are you going to that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause it's an hour and a half from there regardless.
Yeah, I can't take the time off of my work to go to that one, cause I'm already missing work Monday.
What about Thursday?
Well, Thursday, we have a meeting.
The ninth?
Yeah, that's a regular board meeting.
Yeah. We have the special one on the second. Friday?
I can do Friday.
I was gonna say, it's inconvenient for me, but I can make it work.
What day is that?
The tenth.
Why do I have economic development committee?
I don't know.
No, nevermind.
Why do you have it on your calendar?
Uh, no, it's not that, sorry.
Well, Wednesday, the eighth, I think is the next economic development.
Yeah, no, I, I have something on my calendar for the tenth, it's E O D, I don't know why.
Pull something up.
Yeah, it's something different.
It's just five people.
At five P M, okay, we're good.
So are we doing the tenth?
That's, that is the million dollar question. The tenth? Or the Wednesday?
The tenth works best for me, Wednesday, Jamie's gonna be late, right?
No, that's Tuesday, I'd be late.
Tuesday, he'd be late because of training in Roland.
Wednesday, we have economic development committee at six.
Why don't we do Tu- Tuesday and, and the backup day is Friday?
Okay.
So Tuesday, the seventh, and Friday.
Well, if we're gonna split this into two separate sessions, we could do Tuesday and Friday.
Right, well, that too.
And start Tuesday later, so you can get back?
No, we'll keep, try to keep it at six.
Okay.
And then, the tenth at six as well, right?
Yeah.
You come, are you going to like one of the town things for, for municipalities?
Yes.
You should be done by four o'clock, you need to be on the road by four thirty.
Alright.
Yeah.
I know she, she thought it started around eight or eight thirty, but she wasn't sure what time ended.
Okay.
Okay, so seventh, third.
So I just went to the water in Martin, so I made it back for the.
I did, I could sort them out. Take who I want.
So we're gonna do the seventh and the tenth then?
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep things flowing here.
You want a half hour, half hour per firm?
Yes.
Yeah, I would say we schedule a half hour for each, so, you want, you wanna try to do like two or three? The Tuesday and the other ones on Friday?
Yeah, that one's good.
And then we'll go based on how many responses we get, if only one says they're gonna come, then obviously that makes that easier.
So the six to six thirty, and then what? Seven to seven thirty, and then eight to eight thirty?
I was gonna say, how much of a break do you want in between?
Oh, I don't want much.
Usually put a five minute break in.
Yeah, I was gonna say, five minutes is more than enough.
Yeah.
So six forty-five?
For them to walk out, take their materials and the next one to walk in.
Yeah, I always do it.
So six to six thirty, then?
Six forty-five.
Yeah, six forty-five does, yeah.
Seven fifteen.
Yeah.
And then seven thirty to eight.
Yep.
And I'll just send them all the schedule.
Yep.
And ask them, you know, be prompt and all that kinda thing.
Yeah.
And I'll offer Skype, right?
Not Skype, a conference call, a teleconference.
I mean, well, we could try to set up Skype, has anybody ever actually Skyped in here?
I don't see a camera on that.
Oh, you're right, there's no camera.
We don't, uh.
Alright, so Skype's out.
So teleconference.
I'll, I'll forward you the, what I'm gonna send out.
Yeah.
You wanna modify?
It is, I mean, let's, when you contact them.
Face time on an iPhone.
Make sure that we prefer a face-to-face.
Yeah.
Preference is face-to-face.
Say, say that to them first, we would like a face-to-face interview. And if, for whatever reason, they say, well, I can't do it, you know, this scheduling, but I could call. Reluctantly, maybe accept that. But our preference is face-to-face.
Okay, I'll whip that up for you.
Alright, thank you, Mike. Okay.
The, um. You all get all this?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
That's essentially, uh, here's the, uh, the grading worksheets. Uh.
Was this my copy or your copy, Marlena?
The first thing we do is, you see there's, uh, checklist, so when you receive it, you look at the statement, you know, is this, uh, qualified bid, statement of interest, scope of services, you know, qualification, relevant project, and depletion time, insurance, and experience, and then you use the weighted averages over the categories we have, and these are done independently uh, by myself, Tom Shuey, and Darcy. And we all came up with independent, added them all up, and that's the totals, and that's who number one through five, that's the worst.
Okay.
That's, so.
Alright, does anybody have anything else they wanna add to this? Before we adjourn?
Do we, do we have the raw scores? I mean, when you, you just talked about the, uh, the, the process, that's the matrix, right? The, the five, uh, the five, uh, qual- uh, the, the, the five categories, and then the five, uh, and then the three categories. Um, so basically, we got eight categories, whether yes or no, I think that's what you were just referring to, right? That was the one to five?
Right, there's a vendor checklist, essentially, when they come in, do they meet, do they meet everything, uh, of the RFP? Yes or no, and then you go through and, I gotta read my own.
Well, hang on, Michael, get back and ask the question, then the yes or no, is the, is a, is a whether or not you met the requirements of the RFP?
Correct.
Or the output of somebody's one to five scoring?
No, whether, the, the first questions are yes or no. So when they come in, go through the, the RFP, do they meet everything in the RFP? Statement of interest, scope of services, qualifications, relevant proj- projects, et cetera. And I see there are yes or no answers.
And the reason I ask is because, um, um, whether or not it was a, a subjective determination, the qualification, certainly the relevant projects was included in each one of the responses, so there had to be somebody's assessment of whether or not these are truly relative.
Well, do you consider, uh, having at least a municipal or a, uh, commercial building as a, as a prerequisite? That, uh, if nobody has, uh, any relevant projects, uh, public or municipal buildings, or any kinda commercial buildings, would you consider them to have relevant?
That's a valid question, but, um, but at the same time, I, if I read that proposal correctly, the Hancock Town Hall was listed. That would be a municipal project.
I was gonna say, I, I think we're diving into individualities here, and I think we should, uh, this is just a form, you know.
Go on up, go, go through all of them.
Matrix.
You choice. Put through all of them.
Well, I.
Alright, I was just trying to, I was just trying to understand, uh, uh, whether or not these were, you know, uh, what you call qualitative, or, or was it, um, uh, there is some subjective, subjectivity in the responses, it has to be somebody's assessment as to whether or not it did or didn't meet it. And, and, and two reasonable people could disagree on that.
Correct.
That is true, that's why we're just taking Michael's analysis is just a recommendation in his opinion, it's, it's not binding by any means. We're gonna make our own decision.
But we're gonna take the staff's feedback and their interpretation and scoring that they applied to their needs, which they would know best, into consideration.
Right, so we, yeah, absolutely, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we ignore anybody's input. Um, but, uh, and it is, uh, it is, you know, we take that under consideration, but just like, uh, just like you said, Brian, it's, it's our decision. And, uh, each of us has a vote.
Correct.
Exactly. So I, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that everybody has a chance to speak, answer any que- get answers to any questions they have, and everybody has a chance to put input in.
Okay. Um, before we adjourn, I just wanna run through the questions and make sure that I've got them documented correctly, so that they could be rewritten. Bob, if you can't hear me, just let me know. So.
I can hear you.
Question one, a- and these aren't in the same order that they're appearing on the sheet, so just bear with me. What type of communication plan will you provide to engage the public with this project? And so, the bullets, that, the, the notes, or whatever Cliff Notes we want them to touch on, communication plan, public engagement, is there anything else that we are gonna be looking for from that response? What are those boards called, um, storyboards?
Storyboard, presentation board.
Presentation board, and the cost.
I think they should be including that in the project, their communication plan.
Show and tell, I mean, some of them might just do it as a slideshow on a, on a laptop, you know, like a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. Mini model. Um, question two, what is your approach to project management and project management procedures? Key points we're looking for, their type of project plan they're gonna be utilizing, um, frequency of project reports, um, how often are they gonna be giving us, um, reports sticking to the scope, schedule and budget? Project management point person, who that is and what their, what their frequency's going to be. Um, change order process and approval, quality assurance and validation of work, and compliance. Anything else? Bob? Bob?
I don't, uh, uh, excuse me.
I didn't understand a word of that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I thought that sounded fine.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, question three, what have you included in your incidentals? And I have permitting, surveying, liability, was there anything else? Costs associated, dot, 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 I'm not sure what.
Well, I think we were gonna ask them, like, is there anything they, they can think of that we're not specifically?
Anything missing?
Yeah, are we missing anything?
Are not considering.
Cause they might very well be like, well, your RFP asked for this, this and this, but really, you need to be asking about these.
Okay.
Items as well.
So other things that they might bring to our attention?
Yeah.
Question four, and I hope I worded this correctly for you, Bob, um, well, for the, for the board. I tried to combine two of the questions, so of your three proposal, three options submitted, which option are you leaning toward? And what is the high level cost estimates associated with it? And some of the key points we're looking for, building positioning, economical features, proposed, um, pro- um, ability to upgrade and energy efficiencies considered.
I think that's a pretty concise question.
Okay. And then there's a fifth question, and I'm not quite sure how to approach this one. The guaranteed price through life, we didn't, should I lump that in with incidentals? It's not really part of incidentals.
We weren't really gonna do.
I don't know if we wanna word it, you know, the guarantee, like, how are they gonna manage cost overruns, maybe?
Thank you, okay. How, what is your cost overrun plan?
Yeah.
Or change order procedure. Change order.
Is that similar to the question we asked about, um, well, we talked about change order process and approval.
Oh, I didn't hear you, it was actually state that.
Yeah. Should I, should I take that, should I take change order process and approval out of question two as a key point and make it a question all by itself?
Could I, um?
No, that's probably nice, it's.
Oh, and Bob wants to say something. Go ahead, Bob.
Okay, uh, so I, I, um, my recommendation would be that we, uh, we leave both of those questions in there, they might be a little bit redundant. Maybe we should be an executive session, I. They might be a little bit redundant, but, but it's kind of a check, right? How do we answer them, and was there a contradiction down?
Okay, so what is your cost overrun plan?
Okay.
Okay. I think that hits everything that was on the list, and then obviously, as we talked about before, as they answer these, we might have rhetorical questions to go back to them.
Or ask them to expand on something.
Yep. Okay.
Which we're allowed to do.
Did I miss you state, as far as managing safe work area and environmental controls?
I thought we were taking that out.
I was gonna say, that's, that's almost should be a prerequisite, no matter what, I mean, just OSHA and motion regulations alone.
Well, I think that.
Present codes.
Are they gonna have a onsite safety coordinator?
Right, theoretically, that would fall under your approach to project management and project management procedures.
Okay.
Where I talked about, um, it's like Q A, I D and V, the, the quality assurance, um, validation and verification and compliance.
It should be in there, I just don't want us to miss it, that's all.
Um.
Sure point.
So do you want me to throw in another question, could be a little, a little bit redundant, but just talk about what is your, what are your safety plans?
Yeah, as far as dealing with na- you know, boundaries and neighbors, runoff under the neighbor's property, basically, or something like that.
Quarantine containment.
Explain your.
That kinda stuff?
Yeah.
I mean, for like putting up netting and for like grading in case anything spills, that kinda stuff?
Mm-hmm.
And I'll just put compliance with laws and rules and regs.
How do you ensure that you're following the laws and rules and regs onsite?
Yep, for a construction site.
You start digging the foundation, we get a deluge, rain for three days, and it fills up because of the way we're digging it. It goes on somebody's basement, or I, I'm just throwing a hypothetical out there.
It's a real one, happens, all the time.
So.
Well, I, I think, uh, we need to, we need to be cognizant of whatever the cause is, the cost overrun still has to go into through the, through our process.
Yes.
It's more likely to, uh, be approved if it's, you know, due to weather, or due to, uh, due to something that they couldn't foresee versus, uh.
Price of sheet rock goes through the roof, sheet rock is sheet rock, it's gonna go through the roof and